Thank you all for coming to this special session. It got longer between Thursday night. We just had one or two things we were going to take up and then we had events on Friday that required us to act on more than just one or two small things. Welcome to the meeting. I'd like to start with our moment of silent reflection. Ask that you keep a couple of folks in particular in mind. We lost Martha Fiola this past week. Martha was a longtime Board of Education member, also a principal and teacher in our school system, and Frank Fiola, who was associated with the city as a council member, longtime principal out at our high school for many, many decades. Martha was always right there beside him. So let's keep her in our best thoughts and prayers. And also, I just understood from a couple of folks giving me details about John Giegax having another stroke and hospitalization. So let's keep them both in our best thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. And Council Lady Albaugh, would you be so kind as to lead us in respecting our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. We'll try to get through this agenda as quickly as possible because we do have a water board meeting scheduled at four, and that's a very full agenda as well. So first matter that we're going to take up, before we get into guests, I'd like to jump down quickly to strategic issues and take up C1, which is the acceptance of the resignation of Fire Chief Jim Townsend. I individually disseminated to all of you the email that was received last Friday. Jim Townsend has served us for about a year and a half, great spokesman for the department, good guy. We're sorry for him to be moving on from us, but I do want to reassure everyone that we have a very strong Buchanan Fire Department, the combination of our six paid firefighters and our many excellent volunteers. But the first order of business would be to accept the resignation of Chief Jim Townsend. May I have a motion to that effect?
Some of...
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. I have a second by Council Lady Albaugh. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for that question. All those in favor of acceptance of Jim Townsend's resignation as Fire Chief signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes reflect the motion carries unanimously. The second part of this Fire Chief puzzle, and he's done it before, J.B. Kimball is here. Within a few minutes after receiving the notification about Jim's resignation, I went down to the fire hall and J.B. was working, and I think three of the five other paid guys were there at the same time, and I gave them the details relative to his resignation. And there wasn't any swearing in or anything, but J.B., as a matter of his job description, acts as chief since he is the captain anyway. We're going to try to expedite this process as much as possible. There's a timetable that we'll discuss here in just a short bit, that we hope to have the new Fire Chief in place about the 1st of April. So that's three months out. But J.B., you're the man. So there is a little added compensation associated with this. The last time when J.B. acted as chief, given his already being a paid firefighter, he was given an additional stipend for his administrative duties of 10 hours per week. And we would like to renew that commitment that was followed two years ago. So as a, just so we're all clear on this, I would ask for a motion that we appoint Captain Kimball as interim Fire Chief during the time that we conduct our search with that same proviso that the council followed two years ago about this same time with the added compensation time of 10 hours a week to discharge his administrative functions. May I have a motion to that effect?
I move.
There are a motion by Mr. Rollins. I have a second by Council Lady Capery. Is there any discussion on that motion? No, hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. J.B., tell the guys, you know, we're going to expedite this. We know you want to get that seventh person back on the fours. I would add that in your packets is the job description that the council contrived two years ago. Michael Doss had actually asked me to weigh in on that, even though I was not acting as city attorney, having done those type of documents before. So I had some input on that last one. Having listened to some of the input from our various paid firefighters especially, we may want to tweak that job description a little bit. We want someone who is going to be active both administratively and operationally and whatever it takes to better accomplish that so that we're being very clear in our expectations for the next Fire Chief. So we're going to make sure that you have plenty of copies to take down with you to the fire station and pass around among the guys. The game plan will be to have an amended, edited job description ready at the January 18 council meeting. If I may, you have in your packet the proposed timetable. I sent this to Ambie and J.B. earlier. Today, obviously, we've accepted the resignation of Chief Townsend. We've appointed J.B. as the interim Fire Chief. We're providing everybody with the 2016 job description for possible amendment editing. The next thing would be the January 18 council meeting. We'll approve the final job description and authorize advertising for the position. We'll start the advertising process January 22. Anything in newspapers would be completed by February 2. Online pre-advertising could continue right up until the deadline for application submission, which is February 24, 2018. Between February 26 and 27, council and the members of the Fire Department will review applications, make comment about them. At the next council meeting on March 1, we'll identify our list of applicants for interviews, have an executive session about those during those interviews. March 13 will be the actual conducting of the interviews. March 15 would be the anticipated date of selection and appointment of the new Fire Chief. Two weeks after that, we're into the 1st of April, and somewhere between April 1 and May 1, we would expect the new Fire Chief to commence his or her service as our Fire Chief. The first reporting of the new Fire Chief would be either at the April 5 or the May 2, 2018 meetings. Is there any questions or comments about that timetable? Hearing of the, I would entertain a motion that we try to subscribe to this timetable, recognizing that this is fluid. We may have to tweak it along the way, but I think at least outlines a legitimate timeframe for us to get a new Fire Chief in within a three-month period. I would entertain a motion that we adopt this timetable.
I move.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Council Lady Albaugh. Is there any discussion on that motion? No, hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Does it have to go through the civil...
None.
Okay.
Fire chiefs, police chiefs are non-civil servants. Now, for clarification, there is, if one or more of our existing firefighters would apply for the position of Fire Chief and become the Fire Chief, there is statutory protection that continues for both firefighters and police officers. They remain, it's sort of dormant, hibernating, civil service. If they opt to no longer be Fire Chief or would be discharged as Fire Chief or Police Chief, they go back to their civil service position.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, that's exactly right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, now let's jump back to guests. And first up is Callie Sams, our information coordinator and grant researcher, writer, and she's going to present us information about this new VGF Volunteer Center funding grant. Callie, it's all yours. I know we've all looked at your proposal, and it's, I'm amazed in that short of a period of time that you put together something so comprehensive. My hat is off to you, but you have the photo.
Thank you. Well, Susan and Mike, we've got the updated budget. I have them sitting there.
If it's in our package.
Well, this one fits a little better into one page, so you have the pair. Pay close enough attention to the printing setup when I sent it out yesterday evening. So this is a little bit easier to read when it's printed out. So you have the budget. You should also have the Volunteer West Virginia's Request for Application document. That gives all the details of the grant. And then in addition, there's a third document, which is what I've drafted in response to that in the narrative sections. That will be submitted via Survey Monkey is how they have it set up if you were to choose that you would like to go ahead with it. If you'd like, I can go ahead. If you jump down in the narrative to E is the project description, and I could read a little bit from that if time allows. It says, "The City of Buchanan will host a volunteer center called the Buchanan Volunteer Center, which will match volunteers with volunteering opportunities within the city. These opportunities will consist of city-sponsored events and projects as well as volunteer opportunities sponsored by other organizations within the community. This grant funding will be used to pay for a part-time staff member to operate the volunteer center, volunteer management software application, advertising and promotion of the volunteer center, and associated events and training for volunteer leaders. A part-time Buchanan Volunteer Center Coordinator staff member will maintain the web-based volunteer center application and website, create and distribute informational posters and flyers, network with city departments and community organizations that need volunteers, and coordinate volunteer training opportunities. The online volunteer management system will allow the public to search for volunteer opportunities and registered volunteers, as well as track volunteer numbers and hours and activities for support purposes and grant reporting." I've also listed some events that we may want to post onto the online system. I've done them month by month. The grant period is April 28 through March of 2019. So I have a list of events. Make-A-Chine cleanups in April and Adopt a Highway cleanups, of course, working with the Strawberry Festival in May, Festival Fridays throughout the summer, and the Community Gardens as well throughout the summer, the 4th of July celebration, perhaps doing a lazy river float to benefit the fishing pier project, doing something in September for National Preparedness Month and readiness and citizen, being prepared for disasters. The Community Composting Program, that's going to possibly get going, and a recycling campaign in November. November 15 is America Recycles Day, so that might be a way to increase recycling and therefore reduce our landfill costs. Of course, the Christmas Parade and holiday activities in December, and then maybe Martin Luther King Day of Service Event in January, February, Heart Health Month, and then ongoing, of course, the basketball program at Stockard U Center, other volunteer opportunities that we might see there at Stockard, Historic Upkeep at the different, at the cemetery, and the Good Neighbor Program, which I came across in the Buchanan 2020 Plan, might be a place we could advertise for that. And then advertising funds will be used to promote the volunteer center, and that will be both via the web and also here at City Hall and at the library. The grant will pay for volunteer leading training, volunteer leader training, which we may choose to use for CERT training, program manager training in April. And these individuals will then leave volunteer training workshops and will train volunteer leaders in public preparedness and techniques for residences and businesses. Skipping down, there's more sections, of course, for the narrative, but maybe for the sake of brevity, I don't know if you want me to go through each one, or with the budget, would you like me to go through that line by line, or how detailed would you like to go into this now, or do you just have questions?
You can maybe hit the high points of the budgetary stuff. I do have some other, I don't know how many of those events you want to list. That's not intended to be a comprehensive, you're just giving some definite...
Just giving some highlights and then, the city might have more events or ongoing volunteer opportunities that we can add, and then within the community, this will be open to any organizations within the community that we want to partner with. I've already spoken with Katie at the Wesleyan Center for Community Engagement.
I just have, I mean, I think kind of along those lines, and I didn't read this in real detail, I just kind of skimmed through it, but it's just a slight caution to distinguish between what you said, possible ideas, and things that sound like we're definitely going to do it. Does that make sense? And here's an example. At the bottom of page two, you talk about teaching 21st century work play skills and a Makerspace series at Stockard U. I haven't heard that that's been planned.
Right.
And so I think that, so maybe if you would just say, "That might be offered," or, because I don't think they have the equipment for Makerspace. Yeah, so I think that's just that distinguish, like, I don't want, you know, imply that we're already doing all these things, that they're going to be up there and then somebody's going to be expecting it, or the funder will be looking for it. So just a distinctiveness between something that's a possibility and something that's being promised.
Right. I think a lot of background information that I used for the narrative came from the 2020 Plan, the 2015 Plan.
We talked about that. Those are ideas.
And I know that one of the, one of the items listed was retaining millennials or, and that's sort of, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but I thought I would, that's one of the reasons I decided to incorporate that, because I thought that might be one way we would be able to better do that.
I mean, if you would say that could be rather than it said, "Sure, this will be implemented as part of the Makerspace Workshop Series offered at Stockard U Center," and the like, like, "A possible or could be or something," which is making...
I love the way that you've gone through month by month, because we literally do something or many things every month. Maybe it's just as simple, as easy as saying, "The events, projects hosted or that may come to be hosted by the City of Buchanan." And in April, we have Gary Cannell's Hillbilly Days. End of August, we had the River Fest thing. September, we have Children's Festival, Truck Fest, and Fall Fest. October, the Haunted River Trail and various Halloween events. So we could, if we have time today, tomorrow, we could add those six, eight things to it and change that.
See, I was thinking the reverse, that you don't want to say, "We're doing all these things every year in a grant proposal unless we've got like some sort of..."
They might say, "Why do you need this proposal if you're already doing all this stuff?"
Right. Well, but we're doing all these things and we need to be able to coordinate the volunteers. I get that.
And the idea is we may, we're doing them, but we may need more volunteers.
But are we...
It's not a central location where if you're new to town, or even if you're not new to town, but you live here and you want to get involved and you want to volunteer, but maybe you're not sure how to do that. This would be, the idea is this would be some place that someone can go either online or they can walk into City Hall or Stockard, try to advertise it at each place and say, "What's available right now? What can I do this month? And what can I do, you know, ongoing?"
But the list of the detailed events, are we always going to do all of those every month, or is this just a for example?
Maybe just changing the words and these are sampling...
These are current events.
Yeah, current or...
Support.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
I think it's a terrific, well-put-together proposal. And I, the budget is within the confines of what is permitted under this application. I think we should dispense with any further inquiry about this and move this into the form of a motion. May I have a motion to this effect? So I move. I have a motion by Mr. Rollins. May I have a second to his motion? Council Lady Albaugh has made the second. Now, is there any further discussion?
Just a really quick question. I looked through the budget really quickly, but I just wanted to know if there was any match that we're promising.
Yes, and the bottom, the in-kind source of funds, our entire 20% match is all in in-kind.
And that is?
And they're listed, a percentage of the financial and administrative staff here, a percentage of my time. And then down below that, the grant also allows for like our office space that we would be giving to the volunteer center, as well as telephone, internet, and web hosting services.
That's perfect.
And I have followed their guidelines and used their technical assistance calls to make sure I'm doing that in line with how they want it. So I think it is how they want it now.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what we were committing.
Yeah.
Any further...
On the back, it gives a little more detail to the calculations.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of submitting the VGF Volunteer Center Funding Grant application, including my authorization to sign on behalf of the city, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Callie.
Thank you. Sorry, Callie.
Thank you.
Our next guest, and he's not a guest, he's our city architect, Bryson Van Nostrum, is going to bring us up to speed. We've tweaked a little bit the First Energy Foundation grant application that we first looked at back in the summer. We've added levels of giving, and that was in no small part driven by the overture of First Energy as we were starting to have some discussion with them. They wanted to see that because their gift that we've been sort of informally assured that we're going to receive ties in with this. So Bryson, you want to speak to the First Energy Grant application, which seems a lot like the one that we applied about this time last year for with the state of West Virginia?
Pardon me, but I'll take the podium.
Yeah, you're fine.
So, yeah, the grant application, we've been seeking a corporate sponsor, you know, private entity outside of the government support that we've already received from the city and the state. So this First Energy Grant doesn't have a deadline, it's just an open application process at all times, my understanding. Months ago, we went through this motion to prepare the grant application from First Energy. Yes, the piece that was not completed was what we call a table of gifts, which is really just a question of what do you, what would First Energy get if they give X amount of dollars? And a table of gifts typically suggests that you've got the big ticket items and the little ticket items to give someone a potential funder some options to choose. In this case, we're just simply talking about naming rights that relate to the name of the facility, as well as the name of individual rooms and theater spaces and classroom-type spaces, et cetera, within the building. I mean, I think, I think if you just think of it as, you know, we've made a very, the grant makes, the grant application makes a very, I think, a very persuasive argument that what we're trying to do with the Colonial Theater is a good thing for the community. So once they, once they get to that point, the very end, it says, "Okay, how much can you, would you like to support us?" So the, my, I'm not an expert in fundraising, but I would say my, my experience tells me that if a person, if an entity can provide half the value of the building, half the value of the project, that's typically kind of a name, a naming of the entire facility type arrangement. So we, but, so that's what, that's what the application states, that if First Energy were to give the city $250,000 out of a $500,000 project, then yeah, this becomes the First Energy Center or something.
At the Colonial Theater.
At whatever, right, exactly, that this would be known, you know, every, every event we have would be happening in the First Energy something Center. So, so that's, that's the, that's the biggest price item, all the way down to $10,000 naming rights of some of the individual, like music and training and rehearsal rooms in the basement area. So wide range there. So it, I apologize if the grant wasn't submitted prior to now, or ready to be submitted prior to now, but it was just, we couldn't submit the grant without putting this table of gifts out there. I mean, Mayor, there was, there was some, you and I and others were involved in trying to draft that application. It's talking about, you know, raising money by selling chairs and the theater and other things. Anyway, it just had to be kind of clarified to really kind of a big donor approach rather than the small.
There's another element about the sequence of this stuff that played into this grant application. We basically made sort of simultaneous overtures to the state and First Energy, meetings, discussions before the applications were made. And we kind of, you have to plant the seeds of thought, and it took a while for First Energy through Greg Heffner to get back with us. By that point, we could then stick in the First Energy application that we had successfully received the $112,000 from the state. So that piqued their interest even more after that first grant was, everybody wants to be part of something that's going to happen. And Greg Heffner has contacted us a half a dozen times in the last six months, saying, "Hey, I've got some money for you guys." Yeah, we heard about that $102,000 state grant, so, but we've received some strong oral assurances that there will be some funds coming from First Energy. We don't know the precise magnitude yet, but anything we get is literally pennies from heaven. I think it's a, it's a very solid application. It's in keeping with what was successfully presented to the state about this time last year. So does anyone have any questions, more questions for Bryson?
I have just an overarching question, and I reviewed just, you know, in the 10 minutes that I had this afternoon between getting both the, looking at the state grant and this. This is my, the same concern that I had when we were at Callie's Volunteer Center. I just want to be clear on what we're promising, of what we're voting on if we approve the application, because I haven't seen a feasibility study or a business plan. So I understand partnerships, but, you know, this organization will use it for this and that organization will use it for this. Are they promising to rent it? Are, you know what I'm saying? And if not, then we're obligated with this grant for the city to just pay for all of it all? And so I'm just really concerned about some of the things that seem like, you know, like this organization's going to do this there, and that organization's going to hold that there, and if they've committed to paying for it. Or if not, is the city going to pay for everything in perpetuity?
The, we have, every single penny that we have expended thus far, with the exception of some of the in-house labor, which, which does have value, but all of the bricks and mortar, the purchase price of the facility are all covered by the value of the state grant. And we are trying to maximize...
I get all that. I'm just asking, what do we vote? If we vote on approving this, are we saying that this plan is what we're going to follow? The programmatic plan?
I think this is just the second or third step in a long process. I mean, acquisitions, we...
I'm sorry, my question's just not making sense. The language of it. "We propose to do this," or "We've talked with so-and-so and they may do that." You know, that, that difference as opposed to, "The city has, you know, committed this and this organization's committed that," like, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's the language.
I think most of the grant applications, at least the two that we've, that we're talking about, do clearly give you the option of saying, "What is your budget?" or "What is your projected budget?"
No, I'm not talking about that.
But what I'm trying to illustrate here is that there clearly is this concept of, "This is our wish list. This is what we project to happen. This is what we think is happening." I mean, I think, Susan, your question is, "What is the city committing to?"
Correct.
And what I'm trying to tell you is that these grant applications clearly have built within them some wiggle room about what do you think is going to happen in here versus what actually is going to happen.
Right.
Now, let me say that if the city takes this grant money from the state, $100,000, and turns this building into something else than what the grant asked for, then we give that money back to the state.
Right. Oh, I get that.
The grant of First Energy, that, that's a private entity, so that would, so I don't know that there's much have-to language in there.
No, the, my question is about the program narratives that I thought, when I looked at, like I said, in the 10 minutes that I had, the state grant seems to be more, "We think this will happen," or "We propose that," and this one seems to be more like, like this is what's going to...
No, they're the same except for...
Well, I've circled a bunch of stuff. It's okay. I'll just abstain from the vote because I don't have enough time to feel comfortable. It's okay.
Well, I think, Susan, that when we first made the decision to purchase the, acquire the facility, we said in that meeting, the mayor made it very clear that I, I think that I can remember, was that we were going to do a feasibility study as to what all are the different things that we can actually do with the building. And I still think that, you know, because we're a political entity, oftentimes we change a lot because who the mayor is and who the elected officials are. And I...
And I think feasibility studies or business plan would be very helpful, not only for the Colonial Theater, but also, you know, what's our long-term scenario for Stockard Youth Center? You talked about the gymnasium and the auditorium. Is that really what we need to do? Or do we need to do less or more, or what have you? But I think feasibility studies or business plans are critically important, especially for political entities. And I think we still need to, to do that at some point in time. I, I don't think that we should say we shouldn't go after this First Energy scenario, but we need to be aware that there's so many different demands out there, people have different ideas about what should be done. I still don't think we know what we're going to do exactly. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, anyway.
Dave, I would say that there's, the option of this being used, having multi-purpose, you know, is always on the table. For sure. Without a doubt, though, that, that the state grant was written from the perspective that this was an expansion of a Stockard Youth program offering, you know, that this was really primarily about youth. Although, that's, in other words, that's why the city would have interest in this property, to begin with.
I understand that, I support that, but it needs to be fine-tuned to say, "What are we going to be doing for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years?"
And how will we pay?
I agree. But if we didn't apply for grants, we wouldn't have the streets and lights and all of that kind of thing. I mean, we, we depend on that, and, and I, I think it's important that we go ahead and go forward.
But they're more definitive when you're looking at infrastructure.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I think that the, the renovation budget and description is perfect. I'm totally comfortable with that. And if that, but it's the program narrative that makes me uncomfortable, because I don't think we've made any decision about that. And it implies some ongoing, long-term relationships, usage of a facility that we didn't decide completely on its purpose. That's all I'm saying.
I think your question is right on.
But, and I was just, like I said, I just said, "We don't have time to talk about it, we've got another board meeting," so I'll just abstain, it's no big deal.
Well, maybe, maybe we need, you know, we haven't had a town hall meeting for a long time, and maybe this is something, David, that we ought to look at in, in more detail with a town hall meeting, get different ideas.
Well, we did have, we had two town hall meetings.
Yeah.
And we had 100 people that showed up last March, and we gave them tours of the theater. We had a breakout group after that for two hours, we vetted all that. We brought folks back in May, I believe it was, to go over what the theater committee had recommended. And then, this council, you know, not only approved the application with the state of West Virginia's grant that we were successful in, but tentatively had approved in earlier draft in July of this very application, that we then revisited because First Energy asked for the schedule that had the levels of giving to qualify them for something in the facility. So, I, I think we've done more than what, what is being reflected here. Do we have other things that we need to do? Well, sure we do. But I, I don't know that this is a chicken-or-the-egg kind of a thing. I think this is just going to provide us some more funding to realize some additional infrastructural improvements, while we continue to fine-tune what the precise mission, the events that are going to occur within this facility are.
So, back to my original question. If we approve this application, are we approving all the programmatic things that are listed here in the way that it's structured in the narrative?
Can I answer that, Susan, by saying you've already approved it, when the state application was made?
I'll, I'll talk to you later.
I, I think multi-purpose is the key, to my mind.
And that's it. We, we, we refer to it as a multi-purpose space that includes theatrical production.
The state grant application came from the Division of the Arts.
But it's fluid, I mean, it's a fluid process.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, there's a lot to resolve, quite a bit.
I would entertain a motion that we authorize me to execute this foundation grant application on behalf of the smitty, city, smitty? On behalf of the city, that's what you submit to a city, a smitty, with First Energy. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rylands. May I have a second to his motion?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of approving the, this grant application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Susan Aloy is abstaining. The minutes will reflect one abstention, and I am signing the cover letter that goes with this. And Bryson, should I deliver it to you, or do you want to give it to Teresa to mail? Actually, what we're going to do, at Greg Heffern's request, we are going to deliver, physically deliver, this application to him, even though it's going to Dee Lowery, president of the First Energy Foundation. He indicated that the likelihood of us maximizing our success with this application would be best if we gave it to him first. So, you want me to just give this to Teresa? I could, I could deliver it to him myself, if, if that works.
All I want is a scanned copy, so.
Yeah, how about I give it to you, so she can scan it? And we need to make it part of our minutes, anyway. So, before you leave, one other thing on our agenda today, that I'm asking the council to take action on. When we engaged Bryson last year as the city architect, we established a nominal stipend of $200 a month for his excellent services to our organization. In the past year that he has been doing that, I can tell you for a fact that he's working for minimum wage. His, the role that he has played for the city relative to projects such as Harbor Freight, the anticipated role that he's going to play in serving as one of the city's point facilitators with the Innovation Center, with the Upshur County Development Authority, the constant advice that we're getting from him relative to Stockard Youth Center, the Public Safety Complex, Trader's Alley, and other projects like that are invaluable to us. And it's my recommendation, token nominal as it is, that we increase Bryson's monthly compensation effective January 1 of 2018, so we're going back 10 days, from $200 a month to $500 a month.
We had talked about this before, Dave.
It's, it's still not anywhere near what we should be paying him, but, you know, we're, we're at least going to do better than what we've been doing. Yeah, we have talked about it, Dave. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, one, one comment. You know, and when we, when I was looking at this, and I thought, was thinking about the grant that we just applied for, $102,000, I divided the $500 into the $102,000, and we could pay him for 17 years, $500 a month, for what he's, he's already brought to the table here. So, I don't, it, it kind of puts in perspective the value of, of grant writing and how it kind of pays things forward, so.
Also puts in perspective volunteerism, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bryson is also, he is one of the biggest volunteers for the community.
It's a token display of our appreciation for your good work, and we'll reevaluate this in the future, and on top, I'd like to offer another little care or two here, as we, you know, continue our arrangement. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the increase in compensation from $200 to $500 a month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down very quickly, since we got a water board meeting that was supposed to start nine minutes ago. Comments and announcements. Mrs. Alba, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Mrs. Capery?
No.
Mr. Rylands?
Nope.
Mr. Skinner?
Nope.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Dr. Aloy?
And I have nothing.
I would entertain a motion that we've. A motion by Mrs. Alba, a second by Mr. Rylands. Discussion on the motion, no. Call for the question. All those in favor are adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned. Well, it'll take a five-minute reset.